...at five seventy-six West Rain Street in Redville, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. At ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items during the course of the meeting, any discussion of any item on the agenda to be had executive or closed session. Willis County Commissioners Court will convene such executive or closed session according with section five five one four and all one of the Texas Department Code. Should any final action, final decision, or final vote be required in the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considered such close for executive meeting or session? Then the final decision, final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by a notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or a subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice that are out as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish your quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, proceed, one.
Present.
Commissioner, proceed, two. Absent. Commissioner, proceed, three.
Present.
Commissioner, proceed, four.
Present.
I will count the judges.
Present.
If you have them.
All right. So we go to line item number three, and it must be finished. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Did you remain standing?
Dear Lord, we come together with grateful hearts seeking strength and unity. We ask for your guidance as we strive to build a community where every individual feels valued and heard. Help us to embrace our differences, celebrate our shared vision, and work together towards our common goals. Amen.
Amen.
May we see it?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Sure, before we start. Okay, so we go to public comments. There you go. All right, so we go to line item number five, approval of change. Here we have. No questions? We'll get back to that. I'm sure that auditor is on her way. Uh, line, line item number six, approval of previous minute is filed February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, public workshop, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, a dent of number one of that regular meeting. February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting. February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. March fifth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting. And my, uh, March fifth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting as well. So, to who did?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Jesus, can you come, Melissa, please?
Amen.
Oh. Melissa, please.
Your phone.
And then close the door, please. Uh, line item number seven, text that to provide monthly F A.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Russell Heimis. I am a project manager at the Texas Samuel Area Office. Um, so this morning I'll be discussing FM four ninety. Um, that has been completed, uh, um, yes, uh, we've completed intersection, I'm sorry, uh, with the DAD systems. Uh, we are currently documenting the longest stretch of four ninety on the north side, and we are currently in base three eight. Uh, the next project I want to speak about is FM fourteen twenty-five. That is, uh, work that has been completed on March third. We are addressing punch list items as of today, and that has been opened to traffic both ways. That's all. Thank you.
Quick, quick, questions? Uh, can you tell us about the project only first what?
Uh.
At all? They're doing a resurface, I guess, or?
I, at right now, I don't have the, maybe.
Is that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, any information about that one. Um, I believe that's a maintenance project. Uh, the, the two projects I talked about right now are the, currently, uh, construction projects. But if you would like more information, I'm more than happy to.
Reach out. It, it kinda, it kinda hits kinda suddenly, but it's good.
Yes.
You're wrong. I led the resurfacing along.
Yeah, there, there was taken. There was some pretty bad sections. Yes, sir. No, I, I, I'm coming up from Samuel right now, and I did notice it on my way up. Um, I'm, I'm more than sure that that's our, our maintenance crews at work. Um, but again, if, if you like it, I would, I'll reach out to, uh, our Raymondville maintenance crews, and if you'd like information, I can get that to you. Thank you. Yes, a question.
Thank you.
The other one, yes.
Questions? Four ninety in intersection, it's good.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you all.
Yes, thank you. Uh, line item number eight, spread of the minutes, Willis County Commissioners Court, proceeding one, Micaela Samarano Laniz has received certificate of, certi- certificate of force completion on the Texas Open Meeting Act. Spread of the minutes, congratulations, Commissioner. Line item number nine, spread of the minutes, Henry de la Paz, proceeding three, Commissioner, has completed twenty credit hours of continuing education provision of Article eighty-one point zero zero two five of the Texas Local Department Code, twenty twenty-four. Congratulations, Commissioner. Uh, line item number ten, spread of the minutes, on December sixth, one twenty-five, Commission, proceeding four, Ernie Garcia attended the County Judges Commissioners Association of Texas earning six hours. Commissioner Garcia has met the twenty twenty-four Commissioner's statutory continuing education requirement for twenty twenty-four. Congratulations. Uh, spread of the minutes, line item eleven. Uh, Commissioner Mario Tejeraena, proceeding two, Commissioner, has completed twenty-three credit hours for the continuing education provision of Article eighty-one point zero zero two five of the Texas Local Department Code, twenty twenty-five. Uh, line item number twelve, spread of the minutes, certificate of completion from Willis County, Commissioner, proceeding one, Micaela Samarano Laniz successfully completing twenty-four hours of, uh, education training seminar for newly elected county judges and commissioners. Congratulations.
Judge, shall we go back to number five?
Number five. Yes. That is, I have a five approval change. Just review, judge, one group. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Yes, if you're a commissioner, that is. Come on. Uh, all, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Line item number thirteen, discuss an approval of this county acquisition of a property easement for, uh, Texas Water Development Board Project number four zero zero nine seven to include purchasing the property easement of, uh, zero point six zero of West Half Lot Five, Lot Nine of Gulf of Coater Irrigation Company subdivision, Willis County, Texas, and from Willis County CAD, partial number eighteen eight two six from TNZ East LLC at cost of four thousand four hundred and ten dollars to be paid from the Texas Water Development Board Project four zero zero nine seven, uh, funds. Which one is this one? There's another nine seven.
Commissioner De La Paz, is this what we spoke about?
This is the, uh, oh, Judge. Let's see.
Yes, it's the CMO lift, lift station that, uh, will be used to utilize, uh, part of the drainage that's gonna, uh, take care of the, this is the east side of life. And, uh, the cost of it is four thousand four hundred and ten dollars. That's gonna be paid out of the T, the, the project. Uh, we have all signatures, uh, ready to go, and this is just another part of the drainage system that we're working.
In my understanding, was it was included or anticipated within the contract?
Yes. It was within the contract, within the, uh, sculpted services, not coming out of the, uh, general fund or within the, within the contract.
Because that one, there was two line acquisitions.
Yes.
By two different owners.
Yes.
All right, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Uh, so move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Line item number fourteen, discussion action to approve the establishment of a department for Willis County Pretrial Services. Action required. We have, it's, I don't know.
Judge.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, good morning. We have, um, Willis County Indigent Defense. I am here, um, respectfully requesting the establishment of a pretrial release office in accordance with Article seventeen point forty-two of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. And so, um, aside from providing, um, of attorneys for individuals who are, um, deemed indigent, um, we also would like to provide bond services for the indigent, and we'd also like to start compliance monitoring for individuals who are posting bond. Um, and so this will, you know, reduce the FTA's that we currently have in place. I understand that we have a lot of FTA's. Um, we will try to rehabilitate and reduce recidivism and provincial overcrowding. And so it's been very successful in Cameron County. We brought in a lot of revenue for, for Cameron County. Um, we're hoping that, you know, this will work out for Willis County. Um, it's not gonna require any additional funding. Um, this would basically be based on the revenue that we would receive. We could perhaps, you know, um, continue to run that department if it is established and.
Commissioner, this has to do with the overall effort that we disengaged with the, uh, Legoleak grant through the indigent, Texas Indigent Defense Commission. And so, uh, within the program, well, this is, March is the last month that Legoleak would be called at all, right? Uh, Luis is handling, uh, the part of, of, uh, being able to qualify or not qualify individuals for court-appointed attorneys. Uh, and moreover, is in this program embedded, is pretrial, which is much before you. Uh, the good thing is that we already have the office. We already have, uh, everything that's needed. But in order for us to proceed going forward, we need to officially bring it to Commissioners Court and consider it a department. And so that's what we're, uh, here for, which will include, uh, bonds, right?
That's correct, yes.
To be able to offer, uh, the bonds. So, uh, as you know, the idea is to do as we're, as Cameron County has been doing, and moreover, because it's been successful, um, we're, we know that it'll be successful here as well. But it's just part of, uh, how it's unfolding. We're not doing anything different than, than what, uh, than what Cameron is doing.
Judge, me, I just add, and I believe, um, we had discussions, and by creating a department, we are gonna have to create a, a budget for them. And it is the twenty percent, if I'm not mistaken, that will be, uh, placed in that department. That way, the grant can see that the eighty percent is coming from the grant-funded, uh, department or account, and then the twenty percent from this, uh, department. That's what I believe we had discussed.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Quick.
So, I will be creating a budget amendment afterwards so that we can incorporate, incorporate all that, and, um, I'll present it back to court, and they'll go ahead and approve it at that time.
And the office is already been established, right?
Yes.
That's a good. I'm interested, and y'all have, uh, an offer of bonds, is that right?
That is correct, yes. And so we will create a criteria, and, um, if a judge encourages somebody to post a pretrial release bond because they want a, them to be supervised, um, monitored, maybe a GPS, drug testing, we can do that as well. Um, part of what we do is when we post bond for them, they have to report to us on a weekly basis. Um, they have to, you know, um, update us with their contact information so we don't lose track of them. Um, they can check into an app. Um, and if we do lose track of them for some reason, they scunder, then we would surrender their bond to the court and advise the court so they can, you know, order a warrant.
Y'all have a limit as to how far you go on the bond, or?
It's three percent, but, yes, but we will create the criteria to see what offenses we would qualify them.
Thank you. Move to approve, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second? A second? Second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Haddo. And Luis, thank you. Uh, line item number fifteen, uh, discussion action to approve burn ban for Willis County. Commissioner, this is, you know, is a, we obviously need it after. Uh, we've had, you know, I've heard from the fire department, there's been several calls pertaining to that. And, but this is one that we put on, in force, right? And then after so many days, I believe it's ninety, and then it expires unless we continue to, to, uh, enforce it, or, I mean, uh, approve it. So, uh, to be on the safe side, uh, I'm, I'm just bringing it up and, and approve it. I can guarantee that all fire departments are in agreement to have it.
So move that we approve the burden.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Uh, can I entertain, uh? Second. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Uh, for the record, Commissioner, proceeding two, Commissioner Tejeraena, it's not present. Sure. Line item number sixteen, requesting permission to use courthouse lawn and approve and proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Proclamation attached. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, I know most of you know me. My name is Martha Martinez, and I'm here representing the Child Overboard, but also as the executive director for the Children's Act Centers of Cameron and Willis County. With me, I have one my staff person, that is Sue Sanchez, is our finance coordinator, and we also are partnering with, uh, the DA's office. We have Lethy, that is here today. Um, we are asking for permission to use the same side of the courthouse on April there. Um, and I will put in a request for them to make sure that the opinion gives me electricity for that day.
Okay.
Um, I'm also asking for you, Judge, to do the proclamation or to appoint, um.
Sure.
One of your commissioners.
We will do it.
Um, but if you go ahead and I'll have you, you wanna read the document?
Whereas child abuse and sexual assault is a serious problem that can be prevented. Last year alone, in Willis County, there were two hundred and ninety investigations and fifty-six children in foster care. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of our Willis County communities. And whereas those victims of sexual assault who receive holistic services and support are more likely to thrive and access the services and criminal justice systems that can help them recover. Whereas effective child abuse and sexual assault prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child, child welfare professionals, education, health, and community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas local agencies provide an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all child victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receives a trauma-informed response. And whereas the Willis County Child Welfare Board, in collaboration with the Family Crisis Center, Inc., the Children's Advocacy Centers of Cameron and Willis Counties, the Willis County District Attorney's Office, Raymondville Police Department, and Willis County Sheriff's Office hereby acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and sexual assault, and to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And now therefore, I as county judge of Willis County do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and affirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to providing our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace.
Again, I have it for you all to sign today, but I also have a little token, and that, um, every year I give you. Yes, um, so that you can remember that this is not just a one-time thing, but this is for the whole year that we do this.
Thank you, Detective Martha.
No, no, no. And then, and we take a picture, take a, you know, whatever it is. Everybody, are you ready to do it? Yes. Yeah, it's true.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
That's the one that counts.
Thank you.
Then we go to line item number seventeen. Uh, discussion action to approve resolution to amend TDA CDPG grant.
I need a motion for a number six. Oh, that's all right.
I have a motion, second, Commissioner, uh, Alanisa Morano, and second by, uh, Commissioner Tejeraena. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Lady. Line item number seventeen, discussion action to approve resolution to amend TDA CDPG grant, CFC twenty-one zero two seven four two, add street paving work including the required colonial lighting to be completed, uh, via forced account labor, and a change to the grant budget where some fund will be moved to the new street improvements activity. Resolution attached. And I think we have, we want to elaborate here.
Sure, um, this we will be doing in kind, um, for the solar lights. And the implementation of the solar lights, that will leave some fund available. So they will just use those funds for the street paving for ten street and for cemetery road. So that's the only, it's the only one that they were, that only.
So move to project. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tejeraena. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Line item number eighteen, consideration of possible action to approve amendment number one for professional services agreement for engineering service in connection with CDPG, uh, project contract number CF two one zero two seven four. Action required. This is, is it the same one? Yes. Uh, so thi- this is for the, uh, for the engineering services. And we have, Ms. Valerina, in case there's any questions. Everything going okay?
Everything's going well.
Great.
Yes. If you would like for me to explain what, uh, what the, uh, amendment is, I can.
Commissioner?
And for five, for five.
You worked it. Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Okay, can I entertain a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Alanita, uh, Samorano. Second. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. Line item number nineteen, discuss and consider and select engineering slash architect service providers to complete application and project implementation for the coastal management, uh, program funding administered by the Texas General Land Office. Action required. This has to do with the park.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. At this time, I spoke with our procurement, our grant administrator and manager, and it is being recommended that we table this item because we do have a seventy-two hour window that we have to review before we score. So, um, requesting that it be tabled.
So move to table. Second. Motion by Commissioner Tejeraena, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I'll oppose same side. Motion carries. And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item number nineteen, discuss considering select engineering. No, I said that one right here. Line item number twenty, discuss considering select engineer to complete project implementation for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, project funding administered by the US Department of Treasury and other federal and state agencies, action required.
United Corps.
Yes.
So for this particular, it's a micro project that was advertised on our website. We only received one bid packet, and that it did go and it was reviewed and scored by our ARPA committee. And therefore, it is the recommendation, already distributed the motions, and so we did only receive one bid. And this is for the auditor's office for their computer equipment.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to, to approve? And this is kind of the last funding available to do the, what we call tribal, right? The tribal ARPA side of it.
We still have a balance left that the committee recommended to, to continue for the technology projects, and that's currently being revised by grant laws. But this is the last obligation and to, and approved to advertise for as far as departments requesting funding from the LATCF.
This is line item twenty-one, correct?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Make a motion to approve office nation Inc. as a selected vendor for project number twenty-three oh-two dash A for technology equipment for auditor's department to be funded by the Local Assistance and Persistence Fund, LATCF. Motion by Commissioner Alapas, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tijerina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty-one, action and approval to purchase technology slash equipment for auditor's department project twenty-three zero-two A for the total amount not to exceed seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents to be paid from the Local Assistance and Tribal Persistence Fund, LATCF, action required. Motion to approve purchase of technology equipment for the total amount of seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents to be paid by the Local Assistance and Persistence Fund, LATCF.
I second.
And motion by Commissioner Alapas, can I, permission? Real quick question. Was one of these, on the budget level, was one of these over or is this another project that I was just in?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia, when the committee met, as you are a member of the committee, it did come over budget, but then we did contact the vendor and we also contacted Ms. Madonado.
It was a small amount.
Yes, we were able to negotiate it to where they came within budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
It was actually a hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Right. It was a minor amount.
Over, yeah.
Yes.
So they canceled the shipping and one of the items.
The shipping itself was a lot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'd excuse.
I have a motion and second, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty-two, discussion and approval for payment of travel for Deputy Marcelino Flores and Bailey, who's travel vehicle for inmate transport to Lake City, Florida for March nineteenth through the twenty-second of twenty twenty-five to be paid out of the jail administration, inmate transport account line item zero one four six one one fifty-three, action required. Commissioners, we don't do this that often, you correct me if I'm wrong, but nonetheless, it does come up on occasion, and I believe that this is something that's been recommended by our auditor.
Yes, sir, because normally this would go through our claims, however, these ones are just spontaneous, so luckily for this one, they were, they were given notice ahead of time, so we brought it to court because we won't, we won't be able to release the check in time if we wait till the next Commissioners' Court meeting. So I advised the sheriff's office staff to put it on the, on the agenda so that way they can have their funding and since they got notice ahead of time.
Go, perfect. I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Please, please.
Second by Commissioner Ethan Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty-three, discussion action to consider approving paying for vehicle accessory for Willacy County Constable Precinct five from capital funds, action required. Commissioners, what this is, is this is the, the new vehicle, new truck, new unit that we got for Precinct five constable. And as you know, we didn't have a Precinct five constable for a while, and, and so he, he started in January, he, he's patrolling with the previous unit, but the new one already came, but it's gonna need the accessories. I assume that he would be here, but he's not, and so I don't have specifics. Now, if he got with you?
No, not in the rest of the amount or anything.
There's a rest of the amount. We'd have to have some for the boat.
Yeah.
And just, I could give about, about eight thousand. Do we have anything in the attachment?
No, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be one that.
Would it require a budget amendment into his account?
No, he's requesting from capital.
Oh, from capital.
Yeah, he requests it. And, and, and as we all know, the, the budgets of the constables, you know, don't lend itself to be able to, to cover such an expense.
Judge, if, if I can, I believe I have surplus equipment, and it could be that he could use some of that because I know Constable Precinct three had took over some surplus equipment. If you give me an opportunity to discuss it with him, I may be able just to transfer it to him if it's already, and what the only cost that you all may be looking at is the installation. But I believe I do have some, if, if it's lights, things like that, that he's asking about, then that's, those are things that I think I have. I don't know exactly what he's requesting, but.
On the table, until we get. Yeah, maybe we need to table it. Because, because I'm assuming it also includes details.
Right.
Yeah, let, let's table it, as much as I, you know. I mean, the good thing is he is patrolling better. So move to table, do? Action by Commissioner Alapas to table, and a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-four, discussion action to consider an emergency declaration for Willacy County due to border crisis, action required. Commissioner, this, this had come up, I don't know, roughly about a year ago or so, and there was various reasons why we did consider it at that time. One of the reasons was the declaration itself, the way it was written, didn't lend itself to the economic situations out there. And another big reason was that our county jail was practically full, so anything, any program having to do with anything different than what we were doing would only add to the situation. Now things are different. And in fact, our, our president, our, our county president, our country, our nation's president has declared the border an emergency, so now I think it makes more sense for us to consider Willacy County, we declared an emergency. And what that does, it opens the door for funding. So as we speak, the, we've been working with, with the sheriff and with, you know, Hola and with our county auditor, because those types, those grants include those types of, of, of funding. Also included is like ambulance and even, I guess all types of first responders. The, the grant is up to five million, that's the most you could get. At this point, what I've been seeing, and by the way, the deadline for that is.
Today.
This afternoon. Is that three point six, we're asking for three point six, whether or not that is higher or even lower for that matter, because I'm gonna discuss, have a discussion with Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Rodney Rodriguez, who we hired in the previous meeting that we had. So he's the one that, that's applying for us. As you know, or what discussed, he has three or four other counties that he's done this for, and so I'm communicating with him as to what, what's being submitted from our end having to do with our needs. And so I am asking you to consider declaring an emergency, which is required in order for us to, to tap into this particular grant. How much is the grant budget? It's up to five million, the most we can get, but right now, what we have submitted is at about three point six million.
Judge, Dr. Rodriguez sent another email, and it's, I think, he hadn't included the budget that I had sent him.
Okay.
And I believe some other in overtime, and so now it's, the request is, I believe, at four point three.
Okay, four point three. So move to approve, Judge?
Well, if I can, if I can address the way that this would be handled is that the judge would be advising you of his intent to consider scheduling or declaring the disaster. If the judge then does declare the disaster, then we have to come back. And so the, the, I, it's, since it's an emergency, Judge, how, how it's being classified as an emergency disaster, that's typically how the emergency declarations are done. So within seven days, you would have to have another meeting so that then you could, you all would vote and consider approving and extending that disaster because just for, for the sake of the technicalities, they require the judge to, to declare a disaster and the Commissioners' Court to approve the declaration, renew it, and then continue to renew it thereafter. So in order to keep that going the way it needs to be, it would be that today would be for the judge to advise you of why he's considering taking this action, and then when you come back, you would already have the understanding of why the judge now is asking you to continue to extend it. So.
It makes sense, and we go through this, especially during hurricane season where, you know, the county judge declares it and the Commissioners' Court, within the seven days, enables that declaration to continue. And there's no sense in me declaring it if the Commissioners are not gonna do it in seven days, because then it'll expire in seven days. However, we also can't take a vote right here as far as you all approving it. Right now, it has to come back. So right now, it's just the intentions of the county judge declaring it.
Yes, sir. And I know Commissioners Alapas made a motion, so I don't know if you're entertaining withdrawing that motion, but.
I would go ahead and withdraw this motion. All right, so we have.
Alanis, I withdraw.
Withdraw the motion. Okay, so then I take it that action's not required?
Not by Commissioners' Court, but action on the judge's part would be required later, either later today or.
Okay, so, so then I'm just informing you that before five o'clock today, I will be signing to declare this kind of emergency, having to do with this. All right, so we move on.
So the motion, there's a motion?
There's a motion.
No, not on this.
All right, so we go to line item number twenty-five, discussion I to consider hiring RBPS to submit application and overlook the grant stipulations while in force.
Judge, and I would say that this one is, is no, we addressed it?
Yes, what happened here, Commissioners, is this is the exact line item that we had on, on Monday, but I put it on there on Monday because I wasn't sure whether we were gonna be able to hear out that presentation and moreover, take action, right? So I put it in here just in case. So at this time, I'm just gonna ask that we table this. Move to table here. I have a motion by Commissioner Tijerina.
One second.
Second, I have Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Line item number twenty-six, is approval of monthly report, and I am gonna tell you, Commissioners, that we do have an addendum at eleven thirty, but I, I, I do have one set for eleven thirty. But anyway, so let's just keep going and see where it takes us. Approval of monthly reports. Move to approve it. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
One second.
Second by Commissioner Alanisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-seven, approval of travel request.
So, yes. Travel request for Sheriff's Department Investigator Sandra Tamaya, Jose Casaneda, and David Santana to attend the sexual assault investigation course in Fort Texas on April fourteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, non overnight, action required. Travel request for Precinct one, Commissioner Mr. Alavas Alvanis, to attend the ninety-first annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June the second through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid out of account sixty-one dash four hundred dash one fifty, action required. Travel request for Precinct two, Commissioner Mario Piterina, to attend the ninety-first annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June the second through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid out of account sixty-two dash four hundred dash one fifty, action required. Travel request for Precinct three, Commissioner Henry de la Vaz, to attend the ninety-first annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June the second through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid out of account sixty-three dash four hundred dash one fifty, action required. Travel request for Precinct four, Commissioner Edmundo Ernig, to attend the ninety-first annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June the second through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid out of account sixty-four dash four hundred dash one fifty, action required. Travel request for County Judge Alejandra to attend the ninety-first annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Corpus Christi, Texas on June the second through the fifth, twenty twenty-five, action required. Travel request for Justice of the Peace Clerks Melissa Nyquist and Flor Montes to attend the experience court personal training in Corpus Christi, Texas on April sixteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, action required.
Commissioners, I heard of those, particularly these are the months that we approve most of the travel. Can, can motion please? Move to approve. Second, Commissioner Garcia, second. Commissioner, second by Commissioner Tizina. Any more discussion? Only favorite sign if I was saying I?
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries, line item number twenty-eight, approval of treasures report.
Hold it. So move to approve it?
Second. Motion by Commissioners de la Paz, to approve, second by Commissioners Tizina, any more discussion? Only favorite sign if I was saying I?
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries, line item number twenty-nine, approval of budget amendment, section required.
And I'll send a has to, if you can handle it, uh, I have my other minutes.
All right.
So move to table.
Second by Commissioner de la Paz, second by Commissioner Tizina, any more discussion? Only favorite sign if I was saying I?
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries, line item number thirty, approval of text collector's report. So move to approve it? I have a motion by Commissioner de la Paz.
One second.
To approve, second by Commissioner, I don't, any more discussion? Only favor sign if I was saying I?
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries. Line item number thirty-one, review of special claims, all just that we had. These are the, uh, the ones that are permanent, uh. Is there any questions on that? Line number thirty-two, review monthly reports on, uh, jail count. Uh, the last one that I, that I saw was, uh, seventy-five, and that included eight, uh, U.S. motions. So really, uh, we're at sixty, what, eight? From here. Where it before it was, oh, because it's still in the nineties. Line item number thirty-three, review of monthly employing overtime report.
Oh, been reviewing that. Page eight of that, Miss Mungam.
It's going.
Oh. What I noticed, uh, I just kinda wanted to get it explained. It's, it's broken down by, uh, by code, and we got, uh, the first one, which is very limited, in Stone Garden, looks like, uh, was paid out thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty-seven, is that from the grant? And then the next one is what I was kinda looking at, uh, no, I don't know. It says, uh, overtime pay, twenty-eight acres, two hundred and ninety point eighty-five hours, nine thousand one fifty-nine point zero three, is that from the county?
Usually has page, the page before, what has the, it's not showing on here?
It's shown on page eight at the very top, it's the payroll, payroll, pay code report.
Yes, but, um, usually the actual line items, whether it's federal fund or any other?
That's on page seven.
But I don't see it on mine.
It's on page seven.
Okay. It's gonna have to be on mine, sorry. Um, so. Do you see page seven on this, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
I guess my, my, my question is, looking at these numbers, because it's broken down by Boulder Star, Stone Garden, and things like that, are, are we in a, in a, in a good place on the overtime as far as the county overtime?
County overtime, we don't, would be, uh, ten thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars fifty-two cents. Um, the page you're looking at is just the codes internally for payroll, but that's why if you refer to page seven, it has the account numbers, and that's where, um, where we look at, and, and the total is ten thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars fifty-two cents.
So there's actually more, yes, here?
Yes.
Bottom one?
Yes, and that's the sheriff and jail department on O two. And everything else is all grants.
In your experience, is that looking?
I mean, it's, it, it's been reducing from prior, uh, years, um, but I have to analyze and see how they've been doing.
Because without looking at the act, without calling out the actual names, there's still, there's still some that are submitting quite a bit of overtime. I think maybe we'll have a, maybe a couple of workshops or something separate to, to talk about that.
Yeah, because I think we've already been, um, targeting the, uh, the meals, right? That in itself started when in January, so.
We should, we should, yeah.
That in itself should, at least on the Jeff side.
The, the reason I'm, I'm saying is, is it's, it's been ongoing, we started, uh, SB twenty-two, uh, so these, these numbers are gonna be bigger because of the increase in salary.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we'd also have to look at the, the hourly, the hours, right? Because the amount may be higher, but it's due to the higher salary, overtime.
Right, there are some that are still a lot of hours, like they're having to cover a whole ship, you know, you need to kinda sort of, yeah, look at addressing. Kevin, that's, that was my question, did maybe to start, but did that, is it a time we're, we're done over?
We need to do that. The, the, the other thing is that, I mean, can I get it with the sheriff, would, would this actually look before us in the other line item? And, uh, he mentioned to me that the, uh, the turnover is not, you know, it's, it's improved tremendously. And, and, and I allude that to different things, but more, more so is Senate Bill twenty-two.
Right.
Because by the way, I, I, the, it's, sent a message with the governor's representative that stops by the office about that, I think they get a home run with, with that one, you know, especially with counties like ours that brought law enforcement salaries up to that level, because that, that was an issue for, for time, as you know.
Well, well, no, enough with O, OLS, it's separate from the jail somewhat, it's gonna, it's gonna increase more, more funding, so we're gonna need to kinda, kinda look at all of it.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's only twenty-four hours in a day.
Yeah, the, I was gonna ask you, uh, have you, and I, and I think we're on overtime, so again, it, it should have to do with this, on, on this budget that we're submitting for the five o'clock deadline, are you submitting something having to do with?
That's what I was gonna ask, because he was in court and he said he would include a ten percent, um, indirect cost, but I don't know, um, it's not, what did I saw wasn't on there, and then, and then mentioned there's a revised one, but it's probably just to add her stuff, so I wanted to follow up with you after the meeting, or not email him and ask him if they're including that, or if it's something I have to request, I'm not sure how that works, because I hadn't understood who was gonna include it, because it's based on all the personnel, and it's based on all the operating costs, so it's not, it's just like a lump sum number, ten percent of whatever that totals, that's how much we should be requesting.
Well, listen, I don't know how that works, but if it's a percentage of what we're asking for, if, if it is, and I, I got an idea, now, as you know, the product that it's at, uh, four point two or whatever, which will be significant, that's one. The other is that we met with, uh, Jim Hock County, uh, County Judge, and the, uh, auditor, well, not the auditor, but somebody that worked for the auditor.
Right.
Because she's also under the program, but I don't think she's a hundred percent out of the program.
So Judge, uh, the review of the final one does show the last, uh, budget item includes an indirect cost, uh, the request.
Okay, so that's what I hadn't seen, and I was about to ask this, and she mentioned she added stuff.
And what, what, what is it, as you know, is it based on percentage, or?
It's a, it's a de minimis cost rate, which is, uh, you only look at certain items from the budget, so it's two hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five.
I, I would at the very least, uh, verify that that's gonna, that you'll be able to tap into that, because with what I'm seeing, and the, the, the amount going up higher and higher, I don't know if we're gonna get it, to be honest with you.
Right, but.
That amount, but just by the feedback that we got from, from, uh, Hock, Jim Hock County, I, I think that you're probably gonna need it.
Yes, I will talk to them, Judge, thank you.
So, uh, and, and, so you know, it, it does include the overtime on, on here for this, um, the proposed OLS application, uh, and so that the, the costs for the, the ten percent is tied to that overtime, the cost of bill.
All right, uh, any other, uh, comments, requests, or anything to do with the, uh, whatever you're proposing? Okay. And, Commissioner, uh, okay, let me just do line thirty-four. Executive session, prefer with Commissioners Court deal counsel regarding any contemplated litigation and/or negotiation involving the county its employer's interest pursuant to VTC government code section five five one point oh seven one, A and two, and deliberation regarding any contemplated litigation and/or negotiation involving county its employer's interest pursuant to VTC government code section five five one point oh seven one, A and two. Do we have, uh, anything, as you know, sir?
Uh, not from my part, Judge, I don't know if there's anything else that Commissioners or yourself wanna address.
I, I certainly don't. If not, then can I entertain a motion to, yes?
Uh, unless you want to hold off on it until after the presentation, because since you have a, a present, an addendum?
Yeah, well.
It's just a presentation, there's no action item, so there won't be a need for you to hold off.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna adjourn, but, uh, I, I certainly don't wanna have it before the eleven, it, it's, actually, it's eleven twenty. And, uh, and, and the reason, well, I, I'll, I'll, but, uh,
You could.
We get this out of the way, because.
Yes.
Unless we think that we are going to executive session because of the presentation.
No, no, I, I didn't realize it was just a presentation, I thought there was action as well.
No.
There won't be any, Judge.
All right. Entertain a motion to, uh, take no action on line item thirty-five, A and B.
So move to, uh, motion, I can share it in five seconds by Commissioner Tizina.
Uh, so Commissioners, I think what we can do here is just recess, uh, till, uh, eleven twenty, we do have a presentation from, uh, Mr. Jim Logan, he's with the, uh, Valley Metro, and he's gonna explain to us, uh, or to you, I've had several meetings pertaining to this, I, I'm excited about it, uh, this new route, uh, I will go as far as telling you, I met with, uh, all four, um, or all, all three, uh, mayors, uh, and, and they're all so excited about it, and this is something that's gonna happen in three weeks, so.
Judge, and I see it's set for eleven thirty?
It's eleven thirty, but, uh, we set this for eleven twenty, I'm not gonna start till eleven thirty, but I want him to tune in and get those bugs out before.
Okay.
Yeah, so to be here, and we'll, we'll just wait, eleven, eleven twenty, eleven twenty, eleven thirty. Yes.
To recess until eleven twenty-five, Judge, or eleven twenty?
Eleven twenty-five?
Eleven twenty-five.
I have a motion in a second, only favor sign if I was saying I?
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. I don't know, uh, who this is.
So we want to add your, um, this is how we pay it, uh, by the, uh.
And we're recess coming back. Can I entertain a motion to go into open session?
So who?
Second. I have a motion in a second, I would favor seeing if I would say aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote same side, which carries. And so I'm just gonna um just indicate a notice has, has hereby given that we would have an addendum number one uh at eleven thirty uh today. And so with that, we'll go to line item number one, is presentation from Valley Metro. We have Mr. Tom Logan, the uh original uh manager of the metro transportation. Mr. Logan, I'm not sure your title. Uh nevertheless, I, I just wanna, before I, I pass it on to Mr. Logan, is that uh we had had this effort uh try, it was before COVID, I think it was nineteen or twenty, something like that.
Yes, that's correct.
And it's through the grant, we did not get selected, but this time around, uh Mr. Logan gave us a good news here just a, a, a week or two ago. And we're all excited about it, the mayor's all excited about it, so Mr. Logan, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Judge, honorable Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Tom Logan, I'm the director of Valley Metro. Valley Metro is a department of the Development Council. We are the uh public transportation providers for the five county area. We also do urban uh services in McAllen, Hardinchin, San Benito, and Rio Grande City. Um, most recently, we uh, we did apply for text-up funding specifically for rural service expansion. So the, the culture project was calling for a new service. Uh, we did submitted a proposal, understanding that we currently have demand response service in Willacy County in the form of a band of services. It was servicing eight A M. and five P M. Uh, Monday through Friday, it's a service like a, that you have to schedule twenty-four hours in advance. And based on our capacity, we'll transport people between Willacy County communities and or Hardinchin. Now, the limitations are, were there because the demand is there, and once we send that van to Hardinchin, we, that van didn't come back pretty much until late afternoon, and we couldn't do any more trips. So we understood, we, we heard from the judge, the needs of the community, we did get a petition of a hundred and ten people from your community saying that they needed more public transportation. We use, we use, use that as part of our justification, along with our regional plan. And the state was uh voted in favor of funding the service to your county. So with that, uh we put in motion the Willacy Express. It's a commuter route that connects directly Raymondville, Lyford, Sebastian, and Hardinchin. There will be eleven trips a day, pretty much every hour of the hour. And uh it will, people will be able to connect to the services in, in, in Hardinchin and San Benito, the local um bus service. And also, they can continue their trips on the Metro Express system that has uh express service between Brownsville, Hardinchin, McAllen, and Edgbird. So not only will they reach the communities within your county, but also they'll reach the rest of the valley with that one day pass. Uh, let me see if I can share my screen real quick. Let me know if you're able to see that.
Yes, we're able to see it.
Okay, so as you can see here, Valley Metro operates a call center uh with a one eight hundred number. So people will be able to get a uh any information, plan their trips, uh with gu- guided help from our call center. That service is pretty much uh open from six A M. to nine P M. We also have a, a mobile app that people can track their, their um, their buses on our mobile application. So they will be able to tell minute by, second by second where that bus is heading, and when they will reach uh the destination where they're waiting to be picked up, or where they're wanting to get off. So we're trying to make this service very user friendly, so that people uh feel comfortable riding the bus. Again, we do have a scheduled service, as you can see here in the table, this is the actual timing. Uh, so the bus will leave the Hardinchin terminal, get to Sebastian, and we already have the locations, we're still pending to uh solidify those locations, but we're looking at the fire department in Sebastian, in Lyford, at the city hall, and then Willacy County and Raymondville, the courthouse. And then that bus will head out, going to Lyford, Sebastian, and Hardinchin. And just like that, it will do eleven trips a day. Um, there are first structure in place. Basically, real quick, I can tell you that that uh the fares are a day, ten dollars per day with unlimited uses. So anybody can get, do multiple trips between the uh communities in um, the cities in, in Willacy, back and forward, or they can go back in, into Hardinchin, Brownsville, McAllen, and then head back. Or go from McAllen to Brownsville, then Brownsville to Hardinchin, and Hardinchin to uh Willacy County. Uh, there's also weekly, monthly practices. Uh, U T R D students, because of the uh partnership that we have with the university, if they're going to attending a university class and they have a student ID, they ride for free. Children's under seven also ride for free, just as long as there's somebody um accompanying them. With that, I will be willing to answer any questions, any comments that you might have. We're very excited about this service, it's been in the works for several years, but we understand that it's very needed. Um, the values that this brings to your community is community value, of course, safe and reliable transportation, the quality of life that brings to your community, people can now access higher education, uh medical facilities such as the veterans clinic in Hardinchin. Not to mention the economic impact that this service will have to your community. Uh, medical, employment, shopping, recreational, and very affordable services uh will be available to your community. Uh, one of the benefits of getting the grant was this grant, it's, we're hoped to get two years of funding so that we can make sure that we are, we get the response from the community, and it's uh sustainable beyond those two years because of the demand being there. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments.
Can I have any, any questions pertaining to that?
Just, just wondering, like, they, they set a courthouse, we need to designate an area that's?
Yes, we, we, we have uh designated an area, we're looking at here in front of the library, but also we got feedback from the city of Rayeville, we're considering in front of the courthouse. So we're looking at the uh, at, at the areas in more detail and also including, including safety, right? Convenience, safety, and, and just overall. Also, is uh public restrooms, right, need to be available at the terminals? Uh, and?
Are we, are we gonna be looking at uh, you know, because sometimes you, you're gonna have people standing outside in the cold, in the rain, and this, are we gonna be looking to add uh some type of like shelter, actually kinda like the bus routes, that they have the, the housing, kind of covers?
Yeah, yes, and Mr. Mr. Logan, can, can I allude to that, the other to that again?
Yes, one of the reasons that we love the, not only because of the location, uh the, in front of the, of the library, is because you already have a, a porch outside with a bench and bike racks there. Also, inside you have waiting areas, you have restrooms. But uh as long as we build the, the demand for it, we can put a bus shelter out there. Uh, of course, with the help of the county, we can provide the shelter, and then we'll ask the county to um help us install it and maintain it through uh the ser- service life of it. Um, we uh initiated the service with a bus stop sign with reflective signs on both sides. Once we build that, that uh demand, where we say, okay, there's ten or more people being picked up at that location then, but we justify the investment on, on a bus shelter. Understanding that bus shelter nowadays costs upwards of twenty-five thousand, not including the installation.
The, the other thing we're considering, Commissioners, is as, as this unfolds, and because we're a rural county, is that we envision that perhaps uh people that are taking advantage of this would probably drive themselves to the area and need parking. So that's another thing that we're looking at, that to be ample parking, uh to leave their cars there, then.
Thank you, thank you, Judge, for sharing that, yes, and as a matter of fact, we look forward to the parking right component of it. Why? Because it makes it more attractive for the end user. Um, parents can just drop their students, their kids at this location, have a waiting area, all the students, or anybody with a car that doesn't wanna expend all those uh wear and tear and fuel expenses to go into Hardinchin or anywhere else, they can just catch the bus from that location. So it's a good uh first and last mile location. Bringing the parking right component also gives us the opportunity to capture that as a local match, in-time match for future sustainability of the program.
The, the, the other thing I think it's important to emphasize is that it will not affect what we have going now. Uh, for, for those uh residents and individuals that are taking advantage of what we currently have. You wanna explain just briefly what we do have, and so that uh, uh people that are utilizing that feel that ease?
Yes, Judge, thank you. Uh, currently, before um the beginning of the year, demand response, which is basically a taxi service that you schedule twenty-four hours in advance, it will take you curb to curb, but it's based on availability. Part of the service expansion proposal, we added seven to seven, Monday through Friday. So that van will continue to service Willacy County, that van goes anywhere from La Sada, Santa Perlita, Horse Manfield, anywhere in Hardinchin, that will continue to exist. People that really need it for dialysis purpose, for example, or a veterans clinic visit, they can still call the one eight hundred number and schedule their, their service to go into the location that they want to. That is not gonna be taken away, that's just gonna reinforce the uh and fit into the uh Willacy Express. So we hope that people can get to Willacy, get to Lyford or Sebastian, transfer over to the express and head out to reach the rest of the valley. Um, there is destinations all the way from there into the island and beyond to Rio Grande City, Laredo. So the connectivity is there.
And that's for a daily fee, is that correct?
That is right, uh the daily pass is ten dollars right now, but they, they're get service to the rest of Metro Express uh service, so we'll be able to transfer between the express service, the red line, the red line and the blue line that we call. Your service is being called the yellow line, because we, we heard that it's a friendship color, it's a love, love color, and um that represents well your community, Willacy County, so we adopted that, thank you for giving us that feedback. I, I think that's what we need, a lot of ownership, and we're just your transportation arm. Whatever we can do to help you guys, we're here. We're trying to do our best job to bring more transportation services to your community. Not only that, but bringing public transportation to the table, it also opens up the opportunities for competitive grants. Employers, big employers are always looking for public transportation to set up shop in, in that location. So I think by you guys showing that date, we are connected to the rest of the valley, that brings a lot of value for your grant writers and for us, that we also apply for competitive grants.
Also, Mr. Logan, since we're uh on YouTube Live, uh to start promoting the, the ribbon, can we, we did agree on a date already, right?
Yes, Judge, uh the date is gonna be April the ninth, ten A M. And I believe we're still holding, hosting it there at the uh county courthouse grounds.
Correct, and then we'll, we'll expand from there.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was asking.
I encourage you guys to invite any grassroots agencies out there uh that will benefit from, from this. We're doing our part with your counterparts in Nodavo County, they have a prosperity task force. And we just uh told everybody in that committee what's gonna be happening there on the, on the ninth. Uh, they were a bit jealous, guys, because they were like, whoa, they're already getting express service, where's ours? But we're still working with them, so you're ahead of the game. Even Zapata, once we finish launching the service in, in Willacy, we'll move into Zapata and do the same thing that we're doing with, with your town.
Great, well, we're, we're looking forward to, to it. Any other questions? Mr. Logan, than, thank you so much for, for uh, for your presentation uh in short notice, and I know we're moving very fast as far as providing the service to our, our residents, and uh we just can't wait for it, thank you.
Thank you, Judge, but thank you for the opportunity, and again, I'm available at any given time, just give me a phone call and I'll be there to support this effort, or any other efforts for the county.
Thank you.
God bless you, have a great day.
Likewise.